For the planning commission meeting September 1st, 2021 at seven o'clock PM. I'm actually going to take this off to talk. We'll call, please.
Commissioner Druck.
Here.
Mr. Kinsley.
Here.
Mr. Galvin.
Here.
Mr. Prycer.
Here.
Mr. Wallace is there?
Real quickly, let's see if we can get an approval of the agenda.
I'll move approval of the agenda for tonight.
Second.
You got a first by Kinsley, second by Galvin. Any discussion? Very none, all those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Looking for an approval of the minutes from September 22nd, 2021 meeting.
I'll move approval of the minutes from September 22nd, 2021.
Second.
You got a motion by Kinsley, second by Galvin. Any discussion? Very none, all those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Who's in pass? No old business to write to new business. The first part of new business will be administering the oath of office for Commissioner William Prycer. Mr. Jeremy.
Mr. William Prycer. All right, I'm going to get you sworn in here. Jan B, and all of us up here, Steve. Read off as well.
Okay.
I state your name.
I, William Prycer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
That I will support the constitutions and laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
The ordinances and resolutions of the city of Lowell, Oregon.
The ordinances and resolutions of the city of Lowell, Oregon.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the Office of Planning Commissioner for the city of Lowell, Oregon.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the Office of Planning Commissioner for the city of Lowell, Oregon.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Bill.
Absolutely. The next order of business is land use file number 2021-12, adoptions of text amendments to the Lowell Development Code incorporating the Oregon State Model Flood Plane Code. Do we have anybody else for the public that's here?
No, sir, and I haven't received any written messages or letters or anything that.
Okay. And then we will call the public hearing is now open at seven oh five. I have staff report, Henry.
Hey, Lon.
Hey, sir.
All right, so tonight is a little different. There's no development proposal on the table per se. So DLCD had to exit the city a few months back. The, the updates are part of their routine inspection for cities that participate in the flood insurance program. So the, the model code was drafted by FEMA and FEMA directs DLCD to implement that at the local level. So the city minister asked Elkhog, myself, to take the amendments through the land use process to get them adopted, and that's why we're here tonight. So as you can see in the agenda item summary, there are a few exhibits I'd like to go over. So the first exhibit A, any text amendments have to be supported with findings. So I drafted some proposed findings in support of the text amendments. Exhibit B is a code matrix, and that's showing you the existing code language with the proposed amendments next to it. And the, the proposed amendments are all from the Model Flood Hazard Ordinance as written by FEMA. Exhibit C, it's color coded. So in exhibit C, the text that is red is language that's just specific to Lowell, and that's, you'll see areas that just says, i- i- in the model code later says, just put this city name here. So it says city of Lowell. So all that is in red. Green text is language that was existing in your code that was not in the model, the model code, and that's being proposed to remain as is. And there's just a few instances of that. And then everything else in the black text is mandatory code from FEMA that cannot be changed. And then exhibit D is that same, it's the same as exhibit C. It's just a clean version. That's the version that it's going to be, that, that's how it's going to look when it's adopted. And then exhibit E, to initiate these amendments, they'll have to be initiated by some, somebody, either a property owner or the city itself. And the authority to initiate text amendments at the city level is city council. So city council drafted a resolution directing the city manager to go ahead and, and initiate these amendments. So that's exhibit E. And then exhibit S, as with any public hearing, you have to notice it. So we prepared a brief notice that was published in the newspaper and posted around the city, city spaces. I think I'll, I'll stop there if you had any questions. Like I said, this is a little different tonight. It's, it's really just implementing the Model Flood Plane Ordinance that is required by FEMA and DLCD. In Lowell, it, the flood plane is kind of unique. They really don't have really a flood plane because the only area that's considered to be in the flood plane is the shores of Dexter Lake. So it's, but it's only limited to that area. Also, any development along the lakeshore is also regulated by the Army Corps. So in addition to any city requirements, any development is going to have to be approved by the Army Corps of Engineers. And the, the Lowell's flood plane designation is the unnumbered A zone. That's their designation. So I think I'll stop there and ask if there's any questions. Like I said, this is all stuff that it really is being mandated. And unless the city wants to opt out of the flood insurance program, they have to adopt these amendments.
So Henry, under the green and red section, under section 9.625, there's a section there for new development that looks like it's just being removed in the Lowell specific.
So, but that's a good point, Lon. That is, the green was existing language in your current code that did not have a direct match with the flood plane with the model code. So that's just being carried over, the new development section. It's, it's not being removed, it's being, remaining as is.
So on that particular one, it has a line through it. It's up in the very beginning.
Oh, yes. So, um, yeah, there's, so DLCD had one last minute recommendation, and that is to remove that no practical site includes properties. And we're going to, after this hearing, we're going to update that language just very slightly. It had a city council, and, and DLCD sent me that revision yesterday. So they were kind of late to it, but we're going to get that updated.
Anybody else have questions?
And if you, if you're wondering, because as you know, the city is also updating their code at a higher level. The plan is to fold these into that update, so they'll just be tucked in with that update when it happens later this spring. But they're ready to go. We've already updated all the references and citations in the code. So they all match Lowell's current convention for naming and everything. And Jeremy, if you want to, if you want to briefly, just, just, if you want to talk about the process that you've been going through with DLCD that kind of jump started this. This is where that came from. There were other requirements of the city aside from this that they had to update to remain in that flood insurance program.
I don't have anything else to add except that we had a natural resource specialist reach out to me this past summer from the Division of Land and Conservation Development. Pretty much echoed what Henry just said, that she's doing a routine review of cities that participate in the National Flood Insurance Program, including us. And if we wanted to continue, we had, we had to make these changes. The National Flood Insurance Program is a nationally underwritten flood program that helps homeowners get flood insurance at a cheaper rate than they might be otherwise, or to actually get flood insurance, because in some places you can't, you're not going to have insurance company sponsorship policy. So we participated, and, and it also has, in case there is a flood, it makes you eligible for certain emergency reimbursements and grants from the federal government. So that, the, the benefits of the program are that homeowners can get flood insurance if they want it, and that we as a city can possibly benefit from, in case there's an emergency situation. There's not a lot of homeowners that participate in it, just the, there's a few of them along the lake, like Henry said. So the impact to the city for these code updates and approved is, in practical terms, is going to be very minimal. We did some research prior to the start of this, and we couldn't find any permits that went through, through a flood review process just because that area is all pretty much already built out.
So this doesn't change anything for our current people that are on the lake?
That's, that's correct.
So it'd only be maybe look at somebody building a new home that they've had to meet these requirements. But since, since we're already built out, all we're doing is changing the, the language so that it stays up to FEMA recommendations.
Correct, new construction, if there's certain types of remodeling, that would, that would come under these requirements.
And I should state, so the green section, again, this was already in your code. It, it states no new development is allowed in the flood plain unless they cannot find a place that's outside the flood plain to build their home. And, and that has always been the case in Lowell. And then, of course, if the Army Corps wants to build new recreational facilities or improve them, they're allowed to under subsection B there. And then any additional development or redevelopment of properties is allowed, and that's subsection C there. And a lot of this, a lot of it was already in your code, it was just updating definitions and various words.
So we don't have, does anybody else have any other questions for Henry regarding this? And we don't have anybody present for public comment?
No, sir, there's nobody, nobody else sign on?
Okay, Henry, do you have anything else? Okay, do you have anything?
I know, I do know one.
Okay. And well, we can close the public hearing, which is now closed at seven sixteen. And I'll be looking to the planning commission on a decision on the land use file number 2021-12.
Oh, I, I should clarify, Lon, planning commission's role in, in these amendments is to issue a recommendation for approval or denial on the city council, and then the city council will adopt them.
Correct. So on our agenda, there should, on the second page of the agenda is a recommended motion. If we agree with everything that's on there, he's basically saying is we on this part of it make a, or saying that we're making a recommendation to city council that we believe that this should be approved. So we should make sure that it's.
Correct.
That way in the motion that we're recommending to them.
Okay, I'll, I'll move to recommend city council enacting ordinance adopting the proposed text amendments to section 9.622 of the Lowell Development Code as set forth in land use file number 2021-12.
Okay, I have a motion made by Galvin. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second by Suzanne Kinsley, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Who's in pass? I think that's it for Henry then, right?
Unless you wanted to stick around and talk about number three.
Oh, sorry, the discussion and direction on the presentation of staff reports to the planning commission, that's correct. So what brought this up is last meeting we had originally that when we were talking about the the business up on Wetlow, and it came out.
It was a home occupation?
Yeah, the home occupation. We, it had come up as the first thing was, hey, we, we need the staff think that this motion should pass. And then it went back out and said, okay, after further review, we believe that we should deny this. Well, all that's on the public record. And so my question to us is, do we want those to continue that way with the denials or recommendations in the public view before it comes to us? Is there a chance of their perceived notion that what the answer is going to be before we even get in the group? Is it going to cause any hardships through the process? So I thought it was important for us to be able to discuss that, so we can kind of direct Henry. They would have things still proposed, written up and proposed that way. That makes it quicker for us to get done with the process. But do we want that as part of the report that's coming out? That's also put on the website? Does, does everybody feel like that could cause somebody to feel like the decision was made before we ever had the meeting, before we ever listened to public comment, and so forth?
I feel like it did, and you know, because the recommendation was there, and then the recommendation was changed. Um, how, Henry, how do you, how would you handle it differently? How should we handle it differently? Do you have a recommendation? I mean, we have to.
Yeah, what I think, well, so you, you don't, um, we don't have to make a recommendation to planning commission. We can leave it open ended, and it can be decided amongst yourself that evening. I think what we can do going forward is not include the decision, the final order as part of the planning commission packet. I think what we can do is we can have that prepared ahead of time, but it will, will not be part of your packet, will be published. So let's say if you do approve something, the next morning I can send it over to Jeremy, and he can, he can get it signed. And, or if the, if the decision is not what we recommended, or the findings change, then I can edit those the next morning and get those sent over for signature. So we can, we, we can leave the staff report more, more open ended and not include that decision document in there. I think that's what caused the, the heartache is having that decision document in there. And, and like I said, typical, cities do typically do that to kind of keep things going smoothly and to make us, to get things signed that night. But we don't have to publish it anymore, and I don't think we should, knowing what happened.
Yeah. Would you still be, feel comfortable giving us your recommendation verbally during the meeting?
Certainly, certainly. Certainly, yeah.
Because I think that that's.
And, well, I, yeah, okay. I, I think the way they can be framed at the end of the staff report, it can have a conclusion of sorts. And, and I can, and I can elaborate that the recommendation is solely a recommendation, is not final. And then beneath that, I can list out options for you. You can accept that recommendation, you can deny it, or you can make your own, you can make an entirely new decision. I, I think that would give you some more options.
Well, I think with the last incident, incidents, it was clear that the staff and the council and our body was trying to make things work for him. It was unfortunate, but obviously the right decision was made at the end, that, that wasn't the best thing to happen, where it was happening. So, um, that's, yeah, I, I appreciate your, your ringing in on the final say because you have way more years in this than we do, or than I do. I don't know, Lon's pretty much educated by being thrown into the.
Well, yeah, but, but, but I should not, or staff should not assert themselves that much in the decision making process. You know, it, it should simply be a recommendation, and a decision is a decision of the planning commission. So, and, and if, let's say, the, the find, and findings are generally written we, towards the recommendation, and that saves everybody a lot of time, and that, that allows for hearings not to be continued, so you don't have to continue on next month. Let's say the findings do change at a hearing based on your decision, that's completely fine, and those can be updated.
I can, I can understand saving time, but we don't want to circumvent the process just because we're trying to save time. So, I mean, there's two as to each sort, so I get it.
Yeah, I felt, I mean, definitely, I mean, realistically, that one was the first time we've had it, that I've had a denial since we're on the planning commission. Reading through your report, you do a really good job of saying, hey, this is where the findings are, they meet the findings or they don't. So that definitely leads me to, to know which direction it's going. For me, it was really just probably having that final document out there to the public. And then
Yep.
The perception that they may have, I don't want them to come up and say, hey, we didn't do our due diligence.
Right.
To question that.
Right.
We're trying to do the, the right thing.
We don't want to be a rubber stamp.
And, and I, yeah. Oh, certainly, and I remember the document that is causing this issue, and, and that won't be part of the packet anymore. I think that, that'll take care of this.
I know, Billy, you weren't in on that, but Mike, how did, do you have anything to?
Well, I don't know what incident occurred after we made our recommendation.
It was just, it got brought up because that, the denial was already in the packet on public notice before we had our meeting. It was saying that this should be denied, and it had the signature line and everything on it. So it was kind of, to me, the kind of perception was that we were putting out there that before we even had the meeting, we were saying that it's going to be denied.
Right.
And that.
Right.
It was implied, if you didn't really pay attention to, and, and people inherently don't read. I mean, they just don't. So they skim, they see the, they pull the information out, then they draw the conclusion based, they've seen, and, and it didn't look good. I mean, because that information was there, that it was, you know, recommended to deny. Well, it is what it is.
Yeah, I just want to make sure the council's good with that decision of, just making sure that, at least that final document stays out of our package.
Yes, I appreciate that.
Till we make that decision.
Yeah.
Sounds like that's the direction, Henry.
Thanks, Henry.
Okay, great. Oh, yeah, you bet.
Have a good night.
Thanks, Henry, have a good night. Okay, so that's it for new business, but we do have other business. Mr. Jeremy, who's got a few things for us, did he like to talk this?
You're the other? All right, other, from another mother.
I got some good information for y'all. With the two new commissioners on board, it's a good, a, good time to do a refresher on planning commissioner work. I know I had one commissioner coach me a few months ago about what they can do to be more productive and informed. So I got some good information for you.
Yay.
Thank you, sir. There will be, there will be a quiz.
There will be a quiz.
Of course, I would expect nothing less. And who knew, but of course, the state puts out a planning commissioner handbook. Love it.
Something else, for the new commissioners, I'm going to get you signed up with an account with the State Ethics Commission.
Yes.
You have to turn in your statement of economic interest report every year in March or April timeframe. And you have to report your sources of income. You don't have to say how much you earn, just what, where your money came from. Planning commissioners are subject to the state ethics law, and I'll send y'all, like, they have a packet on that too, that I'll send to everybody.
Right.
And just one other refresher on planning commissioners. And you'll find that information in this, this book. But as, as a planning commissioner, you're called upon to be a jury for land use and development decisions. And whenever you think you have juries in like a civil trial or a criminal trial, they have to do certain things to remain impartial, like they can't leave the courtroom and do their own research on the case, or look at the news on their case, or go to the scene of the crime and do some investigating themselves. They can't even talk to their family about it. And a, a planning, planning commissioner is, is kind of similar. You know, and, and a small town such as Lowell, there's, it is possible, you know, in your capacity as a private citizen to maybe socialize or meet somebody out in public who has developments proposed that might be coming from the planning commission. And it's, it's important to not, not have conversations about their, what they're proposing to do outside of this formal setting. So that's just one example of, of the role of a planning commissioner and the need to be, to be impartial about things, because these are important decisions, and they can be. You know, if something comes out where where there were discussions outside of a formal meeting, citizens can challenge it, and it can be, you know, there can be lawsuits, things can be overruled. So this, this will tell you a little bit more about the, the process. If you have any questions, let me know. Also, everything that you do as a planning commissioner revolves around the city's development code. That's Title IX. Does everybody know how to access that, or, okay? And then the comprehensive plan, does everybody know where that is? Okay?
Yes.
It's on the, I, I'll show you, it's on the city website.
I'll, I'll send out links to everybody just to, so you know where everything is. Um, that's it?
I was just going to go along with that, because I kind of talked to Jeremy a little bit earlier tonight. When we have, the, the, we're a small town. There's always going to be opportunities that we're going to run into, especially local builders that are going to talk about their plans. And one thing that's important is, as planning commissioners, we do have, I wouldn't call it really an out, but we have the ability to say, hey, yes, I, I had conversations with this person, especially from my side as the fire chief. I come at it from the fire chief's side of looking at certain things in land development. But then I also sit and preside here, so I have to be able to come in and say, you know, I had outside conversations with so and so. I'm still going to make my decision based on what's presented to me, not, not be allowed to be swayed by the person or something like that. So we have those opportunities to bring those up, usually before we start the process. We just have to make sure that we're aware of those things and bring up, even if it's the, what seems like it might be a silly detail, it just provides us that advantage of not hopefully being somebody coming scrutinizing the conversation.
If in your role as fire chief, you come across something that maybe is not in direct violation of the fire code, but sure would be better if it was done differently or not done at all. Are you able to bring that up in our discussions as the planning commission?
I, only if it's inside the findings that Henry has already put in there. So when somebody comes into town and says, hey, we want to build this development, there's usually a, a quick pre-meeting with city, city manager, water engineer, Henry, and the fire chief. And we kind of go through a real quick meeting, and that's where I may point out some of those things at that time. And if it's an issue, and I bring it up at that time, then Henry tries to get it put in to the form so it can be brought in that way, so I'm not acting as the fire chief when I'm sitting here. I'm acting as the, the member of the committee. So I can kind of do that in the beginning sections, making sure that everything's right. But if it's not really inside that paper, that framework or paperwork that they provided to us from El Cobb, that's what we have to base, space our decisions on, is that information. I can't bring in new information and say, well, I'd really like to have it this way as a fire chief instead of the way you wrote it. That should all be taken care of before it comes in front of this committee. Because I'm
Supposed it's not. And it's something that you feel strongly
I have other ways of addressing it, that's not part of the city, but as the fire chief instead. So I, I can't really give you a recommendation at this time.
It's not like Lon could go, hmm, I don't like the way you're wiring that building. I'm going to assert my fire chief-ness on you and make you change that, or I'm going to make you, it's not, it, it, he's got parameters and code and, and regulations that he has to work within.
Yeah, so as a fire chief, when it comes to codes like that, I have very little, I can talk about roadways, driveways, water supply. When it comes to electrical or anything like that, I don't have any ground to stand on. When it comes to those other items, there's a lot of okay, you don't meet this code, we would accept it if you did this. So let's say somebody wanted to put a five-story building in. There's already codes that say that that type of building had to have sprinkler systems. But if the code wasn't written that way, I could come in and say, look, we don't have a ladder truck. So you're going to have a large risk to of those people on those floors that we can't reach. So I'm asking that you do a fire sprinkler system in the building. Henry would bring that up and say, hey, this needs to be done, but where it gets attacked more is through the building codes. When they come out to sign off that they're completing it, I go to them and say, hey, we don't have the ability to reach this fifth floor ladders. I would really like to have these buildings with fire sprinkler systems in them. They then push it from the code enforcement side of the building that way. So there's avenues for me to do it without necessarily addressing, addressing the planning commission. Because we, we can only really go off of what our code, specific code has in it. And I know we're in that code, does it say the fire chief can trump this and make his own
Lon gets his way.
Right.
Well, suppose, all right, we're having our discussion, the presentation, Henry does his thing. Your, whatever your concern is, is not met, and I'm sitting here and I notice he, Lon looks awful upset. And I go, Lon, I want you to take your commissioner's hat off. And as a fire chief, tell me how you feel about this.
Not at this table.
That would probably be that gray area that we probably shouldn't trade in. Because once again, it comes back to what's specifically in the code. And we, we have to make our decisions based on what's in our code, not necessarily off of how we feel. So take last, the last meeting we had, we all felt like it was more inappropriate for him to have his at-home business. We figured he would probably go and move his cars, have him go somewhere else, just because we said he needed to. But there was nothing in the paperwork stating that met those requirements, and so that it wasn't going to happen. So we ended up denying it. Because we don't have the, in the code that allows us to support our decisions that we're making here. So it's probably that gray area where we got to be careful. I mean, I can't make you feel this way, but just know that I always, I'm open my mouth and voice my opinions to people when it needs to happen. But I'm also open to changes. You know, I, I know for a long time back, there was a discussion that we didn't want taller buildings in two stories without having a ladder truck. And a ladder truck is a million dollars. For me, when I came in, I heard that, it's like, we can't support a ladder truck. You know, because the training that it requires behind it, the amount of money it takes to have it, the amount of insurance, the maintenance on it is so expensive. It just doesn't make sense for our community to put money into that. So if I, I can't tell somebody, well, we can't have that building if I don't have a ladder truck, if I can't support us having a ladder truck.
Which is funny, because we were told that.
So instead, I came up with other avenues, it's like, okay, we can't reach these buildings, so this is what we need to do instead. So from the fireside, that's, that's where I'm coming from is I, I try, try to take into consideration what's best for the community as the fire chief. But I also know that there's alternatives that we can still help grow our, our community without negatives, I guess.
And just to clarify, that was not you that said that, it was one of your predecessors. But
I know the story, and it's, I mean, it's come up a couple of times, but
Right.
You know, it's
It's not just Lowell's code, there's state building codes, there's state code. And fire life safety is at the top of every single one of them.
Yeah.
So I mean, there, there's, which is, we don't want, ever want to lose a life
No.
in a building. We want everybody to get out, something tragic happens. And I'm not even a fire person.
But, but I do, there's been several times where we've gone through some of these developments, and I'll call Henry and say, hey, Henry, I'm confused by this, or hey, this doesn't sound right, I really think this needs to be this way. So I use El Cobb to help us that way. And that's through that, that pre-plan that, that they kind of come up to first to say, here's what we're looking at, here's our plot or whatever, and if I don't like something, then I go to Henry and say, okay, well, how do I address this? You know, so I try to make sure that all of those things are in front of us and dealt with, so we don't run into that occasion where he doesn't bring something up that I think is important to the fire department.
And the city of Eugene and Springfield both do those planning meetings. They bring everyone to the table, everyone's had a chance to review the plans.
Yeah.
And they all ring in on it before it comes to here. And those things are sorted out.
And that's the only thing I could recommend too, is taking the time to go through these packets when, when he says he's got them out. Because we have enough time, and if we see something that doesn't seem right, we can reach out to Henry and say, hey, wait a minute. That's kind of like what happened last time, it was, I think, a day or two before, Jeremy, that we went from, hey, let's recommend this to, let's deny it.
I did go back
Because information, information that came out at the last minute.
Like the next day.
Yeah, so we have that ability by the time he gets it out there, if we peruse through it real quick and we find something that's not seeming right, we can reach out and make sure that it's in that package so that we can address it in the meeting. And that kind of went off on a tangent, sorry.
No, it's good information. And it's important because it follows line with are we being transparent as a planning commission, or are we being a rubber stamp committee? And I think that with a small town, and, you know, information does cross, and I get this, that, and the other from the different aspects of what we do. So I think it's good to be open and communicate about it.
And, you know, from my point, since I've been in here, Henry usually does a very good job of staying on top of all those things. And like I said, I have a pretty, I have a, I think I have a pretty good relationship with Henry, I just reach out to him directly and say, hey, I've got, got these concerns or issues with what I just read. And that's what happened last month, is I called him and said, you know, I'm concerned about this, and we had that quick little discussion, which led to tonight's discussion, so. Okay, the only other thing I have for you is, next month is January. And we don't technically have a meeting on schedule, right? I think our next one, maybe it's February. We have seats to vote on. Chair and vice chair.
All right, do that in February?
I mean, it seems more appropriate than coming together for a meeting in January for this, that.
Well, but what is our requirement? It's like, school board is required to do those sorts of things at the first meeting of the year, which is usually August, or, yeah, or August, July meeting.
Well, then, unless if we don't have anything planned for January, then our first meeting would be February. Unless you guys wanted to come together for fifteen minutes to
Unless there's some business to take care of. It don't
Yeah. I'm wanting to have a meeting.
Yeah. Let's see. We can squeeze that in on February meeting.
Yeah, just remind him when we get closer, so I don't forget.
Schedule for the second.
Yes, it's the first Wednesday. Groundhog Day.
Did you guys have any other business? And no other business for you? Look to adjourn at seven forty-two.